...meeting to order. Now, the recess has ended. Today, the prayer will be led by Mr. Pulling, and I'll leave the Pledge of Allegiance if you would stand.
Lord Jesus, we come to you this day and ask you to help us decide what's best for this county, this country, and just lead us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At least the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today, our work session is with Volt Strategies. Sidney, I want you to take it over from here.
Okay, so how I'll do this is I'm gonna talk. Well, so we officially reached the halftime in the legislative session. So what that means is all House bills, not all, but a portion of House bills moved through the policy process. They are now being heard in all of the Senate committees and vice versa. So this year, about 1,200, just over 1,200 bills were filed, and only 337 made it across the half, which is pretty, I haven't seen that many bills die in the first half. Usually, you lose about 300 bills, and then you lose another 300 to 400 by the end of the second round of deadlines. We just completely cut that, and only about a third of the bills remain, or actually, just under 25% of the bills.
The number of the 1,200, you mentioned, is that about an average number filed, or is that alone?
So for a budget year, we almost hit record numbers. So I typically, yeah, we typically don't see Senate bills get up to 600, and we don't typically see House bills get up to 1,700 numbers, because House bill starts at 1,000, or 1,100, and Senate bill starts at 1. So we got to 6, House bills got to 1,600, Senate bills got to 5, there were a couple of high fives. So it was a pretty unprecedented year. I guess there's a lot wrong in Indiana. I say that a little facetiously, but...
There's nothing in place where, like, you introduce one and you take away five?
That's been brought up, actually. For every law that's passed, Steve Bartel is actually from Jasper, has brought up, for every law that's passed, we should have to take away a law. So with that said, you would think that less legislation would be passing, less issues would be moving through the State House. How that works is if a bill got a vote, and that bill did not make it through halftime, that language cannot come back. But if there was a bill that did not receive a vote, that language can come back. So sometimes, you'll hear me talk about this in a minute.
They put it into a different bill somewhere.
They put it into a different bill. And sometimes, that's done strategically. So that's a little bit political baseball there. So about 337 bills remain active. So how this'll go, this week was the first week back from half, and, I mean, we already heard Senate Bill 1, the property tax bill, this week, so they are really hitting the ground running. We'll go through the rest of March. I was ballparking April 15th for them to be done. Statutorily, they have to be done by April 29th. I was told that I am crazy for thinking April 15th is a good date. They're actually shooting for April 24th to be the signing/die date. So everything has to be signed by the Speaker and the pro tem by signing/die on the 24th, or whatever date that comes to, and then it'll go to the governor's desk for a signature. The last bill to be passed will be the budget. That's how it happens every budget year.
Will they veto if the government, if it wants?
The budget will not, most likely, but Senate Bill 1, he has said how you might veto a Senate Bill 1 as it currently stands. So we'll just go into that. So if the governor vetoes any bill, a special session is called. In my eight years of doing this, I've been to three special sessions, which is unheard of. Abortion, oh, there was an agency oversight bill, and I forget the third, but those are all special sessions. And what can happen is the General Assembly can override the veto if they so choose, or they don't have to, and then it can remain vetoed. So...
So they take two thirds, override it?
Yes, yes, and a simple majority vote. And so we'll see what happens, but that kind of brings me into the high-level update of everything that's going on. So I'll start with Senate Bill 1, because that's obviously the priority bill for all local units of government right now. It's a large property tax bill. That bill started off with a $1.6 billion hit to local units of government. After the Senate went through their discussions and through the policy process, that number came down to about $300 million. So it's better, but it is still a detrimental hit to a lot of counties, especially the rural counties. So I have a sheet right here, and I can give this to you, but Grant County, under the current bill, standard lose $1.76 million in calendar year '26. Then it jumps up to 3.5 in '27, 4.69 in '28. And so why you see that almost double from calendar year '26 to '27 is because of the MLGQ formula they put in. They capped it at 0% for your pay year '26, 1% for year '27, and 2% for year '28.
Say those percentages again.
Zero in pay year '26, MLGQ cap. So you will receive nothing for your growth, 1% in '27, and 2% in '28. And so the intention there is that by calendar year '29, or pay year '29, we will see what is called a rate-based system. And I'll get into that in a minute, because we're working towards, we, as in the General Assembly, is working towards that. And it's something I think counties will support. It's an eat-what-you-kill type of framework. So Senate Bill 1, we're at $300 million hit to local units of government right now. That bill was heard on Wednesday in the Ways and Means hearing. It was an eight-hour hearing. There was another bill that was heard for about three hours or so, but Senate Bill 1 got at least three hours' worth of testimony on it. So what you'll see from that, and again, I can, this is from Baker Tilly, so I can email it to you. So as a whole, all taxing units will lose 1.76, so it's accumulative. So I have your, and I can pass this around, your townships, your school corps, how much each of those will lose.
And this is based on losing because of the union maximum level of growth?
In addition to the other provisions. That's not, that's one of the biggest hits, but there are other provisions in there with property tax relief and home sets and things of that nature. But MLGQ is one of the biggest factors in that, yes.
What are they using to assume what the ML, the maximum growth factor rate is?
Department, DLGF.
I mean, it's around 4%. Is that what they're using as they estimate?
Yeah, well, it's around 4%, but a lot, I mean, Knox County is 5.6% growth. So I think it's just the average growth they've seen. And I'm not sure that the average growth is why they took it to 0.12. I think that was just, they want to cap it right now, and because it's been so high, and it's just been such a large growth, that that's, they're tying that to property taxes. And we can get into the validity of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but that was the sentence, that was their sticking point, was the MLGQ. They want to do something. We have recommended, we, as in, a lot of the local government advocates are just saying a standard cap of 3%. It's in between the 0 and the 5, average of 5, 4%, 5% growth. But to say, you know, because you guys know, if you don't get that growth the first year, you don't get it back. You never get it back. You know, it couples every year. And so that's why you see those cliffs become larger in '27 and '28.
You mentioned Knox is 5.7?
Yeah, their growth, their MLGQ growth.
Why can their, you're talking growth in levy?
Yeah.
I thought the, you know, the maximum growth factor was 4% for this, for page 25. That's statewide, I thought.
Correct. That's what their growth would have been. That's what they saw their growth as. They actually got 4, but their growth was actually 5.6.
How'd they get above what it should have been?
They didn't get the money. That's just what, that's just what their growth was.
So there was more, a lot more loss in cap, tax cap losses, or losses there?
Correct, correct. Yes, 4% is the cap, and they extended that. It sunsets, though, and that's where this new MLGQ cap comes in. That law sunsets.
What sunsets?
The cap that they have right now. It's in statute that they capped it.
Is this just for Knox County?
No, statewide.
Okay, you're kind of, you've lost me, yes. You know, we have the 1%, 2%, 3% caps are in our Constitution for the different classes of property. That's not sunset, that's that goes...
Correct, correct.
But every year, the DLGF calculates a growth factor for our levies, our operating levies, basically. And it's usually around 4% is what it averages. Is that what you're saying, that Knox is 5. something?
So as it relates to their growth in their levies, they had 5.6. They did not get 5.6, because from last year, or to the last budget cycle, they put a cap.
Who's "they"?
The General Assembly put a cap on MLGQ growth.
Put a cap on?
And what could be paid. And I can get you that piece of legislation.
So the fact that it was 4% in page 25 for us, that was below what the cap that the General Assembly set, evidently, because we got 4%.
I believe that was the cap. And let me go back and fact-check that.
So 4 was the cap, and that gets 5. So, and I didn't realize they put a cap on that.
Yes.
But it's always around 4%. Maybe last year was 3.6, or, I mean, it's been less than 4 times, but 4 is a good number to usually estimate that it's going to be.
Right, right. And so that's why we're kind of saying that the MLGQ cap, if that's what you're really, if that's what your heartburn is, maybe we can settle on 3, but to not provide any growth revenue at 0%. And then that's where those cliffs come in, and that's really detrimental. And so I think the objective is to, if they're going to cap the MLGQ at a certain percent, let's do a percent, and not this formula that's going to create a huge cliff.
Okay. And with that capping, good for every year, or something?
Correct, correct. Well, and then, but there's another conversation for '29 and what we want to do there, but that's another biennium. We're asking them also, so this is, '26 and '27 cover this biennium, but '28 goes into the new one. And our argument is also, well, why are you talking about a new biennium? Just, I mean, if you're going to do something, do '26 and '27, because it's appropriate for this budget cycle.
Of course. See, what's interesting is, this doesn't, this cap doesn't affect their budget. It's not their budget. So, I mean, the fact that it's biennium or not doesn't really matter, because the law is what affects us locally, whenever, however long that law is in effect. So it doesn't really affect their budgeting process at all. This affects us.
No, but that's a consistent theme throughout the General Assembly. They're gonna tell us what to do with our budgets, but if you notice their budgets...
Because they always can do that.
Yeah. They're not losing any money from any kind of relief this year, or any year, for that matter. So Senate Bill 1 was heard in committee, and it was strategic, a lot of rural counties came to testify. And because we had counties like Union who have, and Park, that have had, that have maxed out their tax options, that have, you know, one person for each service that they provide, whether it be fire, police, they can't, they can't cut anymore without laying off and closing certain services. And so that was kind of the rhetoric. Local governments focused on the lack of services that may be able to be provided, and the efficiency of those services, if that bill passes the way it is. Another big portion, as you'll see, and as you've probably heard, is these schools are taking a big hit. And so there were probably a dozen or more superintendents, school board members, that testified against this bill. Something that we've noticed...
What went on in the area of, on that chart you gave us, it shows the loss projected for schools, for example. Well, for all those units, those are strictly operating, but not including debt service?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Correct. And that's the big question, is the schools having, I mean, because when we met with Ron this week, actually, and candidly, it was not a pleasant meeting.
Who's Ron?
Governor Bronn.
Oh, Bronn.
This week, and it was, it was not the best meeting, because I think, you know, he's telling local governments they need to take a look at all their shiny objects and figure out where they can cut. And it's like, well, you know, it's actually not us, because, and I don't, I haven't looked at Grant in depth, and I encourage you guys to, and you can provide some of that data, so I can get with your legislators. But Tipton County, for example, I believe it was 52% of their property tax, property taxes went to the schools. And if you look at the dollar amount that is the revenue that is a loss under this bill, the county's actually losing more money than the schools are. But the schools collect most of the property taxes. So there's, there's something in there that's making it disproportionate.
Maybe I should, maybe I should wait to let you finish. I got these thoughts going through after right now, too, so I guess bring it up. I have gone through, I know I compare page 24 to page 25 when it comes to levies in Grant County. I didn't bring that with me, it's at home, but bottom line is, our operating levies consistently do that. The county didn't go above a 4% increase, basically. I mean, they're all 4% or just below, right around that 4% mark, which is what our growth factor was, okay? Anybody that went above that 4% growth, that was either a debt service fund or a capital fund, that has to go through a process of being approved to let that happen, you know, the taxpayers approved a project, you know, with debt involved, or you have some kind of a body increased their capital fund of some kind. So anything above the 4% that grew, it was because of the process. It wasn't because property taxes for operational purposes went above what the growth factor was. Do the people of the General Assembly and the governor understand that if you have a unit of government or a county that's going above the growth factor increase, you've either had a referendum in a school that's allowed it to go above the caps and above whatever was approved, or it's a capital project or a debt service? Do they understand that?
No.
Well, why don't they, that's basic, why don't they understand that? They gotta understand that.
So a lot of my, myself and other local government advocates' job is strictly education. It's, it's, that's why local governments are so reactive, is because you pull these levers, and they don't actually understand the flow, because they pulled this lever because they think this output will happen, but they don't understand all these other levers are here and that are here.
But there are reasons that we're above, the reasons that our total dollars coming in local government, go local government, because of lovely growth factors, because of reasons that the taxpayers have approved.
Right. And there's language in Senate Bill 1, and I'm paraphrasing here, because I don't have the language right in front of me, but that, so if a referendum is approved or a bond is approved, you have a one-year period, you have a one-year cooling-off period when that runs out before you can do it again.
That's can you introduce now?
Yes.
Before we can do it again?
Before you can bring it back for a referendum again.
Oh, if it loses, you mean?
No, if it's, once those funds run out, like, for, like, a debt...
Oh, okay. Once the seven years is over, or whatever the period is.
Right, right. Once that runs out, then you have to wait other...
Before you start a new one, you're saying?
Yeah, to have another year cooling off.
Yeah, that's fine. My concern is, is that they're making these laws, or they're considering laws, but they don't understand why the situation is what it is.
Yes, that's, that's, yes, that's why I have that hearing.
And within the county, or within a taxing district, you know, AVs for individual taxpayers change, up or down, based on the value of their property, or based on farm ground assessments, whatever. But even though those change within the unit, the total dollars that the unit gets doesn't change. You know, like farm grounds, you know, farmers are the big concerns, so to speak. But, you know, I know their values, their properties are being valued a higher percentage now than what they were a year ago. The increase to them has probably got more than homeowners' tax value, or assessed value. So that means that farmer's piece of the pie, the total, is going to be more than what the other person's is. But the total that the government's getting is not going up, more than the growth factor.
Yeah, I would have loved to have you testify on Wednesday.
What if they, what if they understand that? It's so basic. And if they're making changes without knowing that, shame on them. They can't do that.
Unfortunately, this is sometimes, I mean, we have, you know, this is, there's pros and cons to having a citizen legislature that is half, that is part-time, because they all go home and have other, most of them have other jobs. And so when they come in and deal with these issues, they don't, if their backgrounds are not local government in this case, they do not know, you know...
What's important for you, as your representative, is to make sure that gets learned somehow, that that gets expressed, and they can internalize that. And if you need people like me to testify, find those people, get them in, make sure they, make sure they understand, these are the parameters we're living with. Do you understand that, you know?
Right. And that's kind of where the strategy comes in, on who we have testify. So what we learned from the first half, and this wasn't our local governments, we had rural local governments testify, but AIM brought in Carmel to testify. Well, nobody wants to hear from Carmel, and that did not go well at all.
Yeah, I mean, bring in, bring in the average, you know, the rural county.
So we brought in Park, we brought in Knox.
Did they explain properly what's going on? I mean, did they, could they internalize, express that?
For their own situation, yes.
Because I want to, I want to, I want to express it in specifics sincerely, for each individual unit, but in concept, what are we talking about? You understand the concept before you start making changes.
Right. And we're really blessed. I also represent the Indiana County Commissioners Association, and then we work with the Association of Indiana Counties, and then you have AIM, Accelerated Indiana Municipalities. So we have our members testify their own experiences, and then we have the subject matter experts, like Ryan Hoff from AIC, come in and explain just that on, hey...
Do they believe that? Do they believe them, understanding it?
Do they believe them? I don't think it's a matter of whether they believe them or not. It's a matter of what, you know, at the end of the day, we want.
Do they understand it?
I think that's, I think that's different, based on...
See, if they understand it and still do this, then they're just playing politics and trying to do something to make themselves look good. But if they don't understand it, they need to learn that before they start making decisions.
Yes, I hear you. Yes, I, I agree with you. And unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, the former, I think, is part of the problem, because to that point, there was a Democrat, and I don't say this often, but there was a Democrat who made a pretty solid point on the committee, his name's Ed Delaney, and he, he was talking to the bill author, Senator Travis Holdman.
Holdman's the author of this bill? He's in our area, though, yeah.
And for Delaney's math, the property tax owner only saves $48 under this bill. And so Holdman did a good job of not refuting it or confirming it, but his response was that they are trying to control future growth. So this is kind of switched, right?
They already, they already controlled the growth within the Constitution to 1%, 2%, 3% caps. And they also already have a growth factor formula in place, I guess they've capped. I didn't realize they've capped that, that they've already got that in place. What else do they need? They need, now, if they're, if they're trying to, you know, and they've already, another point I wanted to make is this, we always talk about the IRS being complex with their taxation process and so forth. We've made our property tax process like IRS and whatnot.
Oh, yeah.
Do they realize that instead of...
Yeah, I think we have to be just got to do that.
Simplifying, we're making it more and more complex.
Right.
And what are we thinking?
Well, I think, I think, and we'll get into this in a second, I think what, that, to be clear, that bill is going to change significantly in one week from today. And so I think, and I have to say this, because this is a little bit of the politics, while we do have a supermajority in both the Senate and the House, from a Republican standpoint, they don't talk, nor do they actually agree on a lot. So we're...
I mean, within each other, within the conferences, they don't talk, you're saying?
Within the chambers of those individual Republican conferences.
So the Republicans don't really talk too much, you're saying?
Of the houses, I don't know. I don't know. So that's what, so where Senate Bill 1 is going, and I met with Chairman Thompson on Wednesday, who is the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, and is the House sponsor of this bill. So he is going to strip Senate Bill 1, and he is going to put in House Bill 1402, a bill that never got a vote. And I think he authored that bill and put it out there to kind of give an FYI to local units of government on where he's going. So his, his and the House's angle for restructuring local government revenue has to do with lit, and not so much property tax. And so how they would like it to be is moving to more of a rate-based system. I think there's going to be some growing pains to get there. I think the overarching idea is a good idea. So what that would look like is that you would have, he doesn't like that even if a county lowers their lit, that it's absorbed. It can...
Again, if they lower their lit...
That it doesn't necessarily go back to the taxpayer. It can be, the money, it seems to be just shuffled around, in his opinion, through the local government process. The taxpayer doesn't actually feel that.
If something was lowered, like if the percentage of lit was lowered, the taxpayer wouldn't feel it?
In his opinion, no.
But it has to, because they're not collecting the dollar. They lowered their lit.
But I think there's ways for cities to absorb that, in his opinion.
But is he correct?
I, I think, and this would be a good conversation for all of us to have, I think the nuances of how that's done, and when a city, you know, when a city can absorb some of that money. But it does happen. I think we see...
Here's my reason I have a concern there. If my lid is 0.2, I'm getting, as a taxpayer, on my, just my taxable income for the state, I'm going to pay that 0.2 on that, on that number, on my, do my return, okay? If that number's lowered, I'm going to pay less. I'm going to pay whatever's been lowered to. So I'm, as a taxpayer, I'm going to pay the lower amount, and that unit's not going to get the money. Unless they haven't actually lowered it, they just shifted it to something else, and the rate is still on there.
Well, I think that's what happens, though, is that while it's shifted.
Okay, they didn't really lower it, then, you're saying? They've changed.
Well, and then, from my understanding, and this is where my municipal attorneys helped me at the State House, is that the cities can absorb some of that lit.
How, though? You know, absorb it how? What do you mean by absorb it?
I can see something about a municipality tax, is what you're talking about. Right. So if that money's freed up, then the city can effectively absorb that.
Well, let me make sure that we're clear, because you're in the Grant County, it's a 2.55% local income tax. And this county council has some flexibility to do some things, but it's a tax council in Grant County that determines that 2.55%. If we lower that to 2.5, the taxpayers in Indiana, or taxpayers in Grant County, when they do their tax returns, they're going to actually pay 2.5, not 2.55. So the state's going to collect that from the taxpayer and get that back to county. It's going to, when Grant County receives it, it's going to get distributed to the various units of government in Grant County that have a part of that money. So there's no reshuffling that. I mean, that's where it is.
Why don't I get you some examples? Because we talked about this, and, and there's a lot of...
Sidney, are you guys talking about the, are you guys talking about the lit?
Yes.
So I, it's part of the issue with, if you look at, like, an example, it'd be like Senate Bill 290, where the, yes, I know the counties all, and the cities have their own local income tax rate, too, but some of that is, your certified shares depend upon their, you know, your, the city debt service amount, too. There's a few factors, and I know Mr. McCord probably knows that just better than I do, too, but I would say it's a complicated thing, and that it might be good to have, like, Oscar or someone, too, to kind of weigh in on some of that, too, because that is, that's a pretty technical matter, that, that is, and I think you're correct, Sidney, that's why the whole idea, they have Senate Bill 290 to kind of fix that for at least Hamilton County specifics. So it's not as straightforward as Grant County's rate is, 2 point, whatever it is, and the county gets that. There are ways that the cities can do that, and the city of Fishers is, and Farmville are two examples of how they can do that to each other.
Okay, I didn't catch all of what you're saying. So there are places in Indiana, or cities especially, that they, somehow the local income tax is affected differently than ours is?
So it's, no, so your, your local income tax, your certified shares, there are several factors that go into that. One of those is your debt service rate, and then also, for, like, a city, if they were to do an annexation, the city can have different tax rates for those annexed areas, and that will impact their certified shares, which, again, in, like, in a county, the pie is only a finite amount, right? And so based on the, it depends on if you're a Coet County, or is it KJ, Cajet, the CAG?
Cajet, yeah, Cajet, you're correct.
That, that will, those factors can depend how much of that actually goes to the entity, the county itself, or the cities. And it's such a, in some areas, it's such an egregious error that they are trying to correct that, and that, I keep pointing out, Senate Bill 290, because that is, Hamilton County has two cities that are a prime example of that the cities can impact how much the other political subdivisions within a larger taxing unit, such as the county, can have their local income tax certified shares influenced from what they do.
Well, my understanding is, and I'm, my understanding is, in Grant County, for example, you know, we have the, you know, whatever the rate and the percentage is going to certify shares, we have total dollars come in, and it's prorated to the various cities and the units in the county that get it based on population. Whatever the share of the population in the county is, they get that part of it. I'm thinking that's, there's a reason, there's a way we prorate it, how much each unit gets.
That, that is correct.
And that's given us by the DLGF. I mean, they determine that for us based on the data they have.
That, that's correct. There's the formula for it. And like I said, not just based off population, I said, that is one of the factors, too, but I know, like, debt services is a big one for it, too. And so cities have been kind of encouraged, and counties technically, too, with how the, the local income tax formula is broken down for the institution. If you have a higher debt, debt, or debt service ratio for your amount, for that, that's backed by property taxes, that will impact your local income tax certified shares. backed by property taxes, that will impact your local income tax certified shares. So it's not always.
Is that every county? Is that, is that true for every county?
I, I think it's for every county that the Coette Local Income Tax Council.
See, I don't, at, at this point, I don't think that impacts us in Grant County. With my experience with our local income tax, those factors have not been determination into how much each unit of government gets of our total.
And you, and it might be that, that might be the case too, just in practice too, because if you think about the rest of the state, Fishers and Carmel are probably pretty notorious for how much debt they issue. I don't think there's, I, I know Indianapolis probably has a lot of debt too, but they're a massive city, but though, in, in Grant County, you may not have the Carmel or Fishers who have just ballooned with the debt that would throw that off. But, but again, sir, I think that'd be a good one for. The breakdown for you.
Well, yeah, I think we probably need to be clear on how that is, because I, I think in Grant County, as an example, we don't have those factors impacting how our dollars are distributed to the various units in Grant County.
Well, I think to Connor's point, the amount of growth and how that growth happens matters. And then it turns into, you know, in this case, Fishers grew first, or Carmel grew first, then Fishers, and then the, add the debt service and the, the population parameters. I mean, it's really complex to where you start to get what some consider a disproportionate amount. And so there, the General Assembly is working on some of those complex narratives for, specifically for Hamilton County, if it applies together.
Well, and see, if it's specific to a certain part or a certain county, then that may be, if it's a more resonant, if somehow ours has been changed, we don't know it. I mean, I'm, I'm not aware of that.
So, right, so what I was getting to with Chairman Thompson's bill is 1402, and that's probably what you should look at, not 290.
Yeah, 290 is a different fix for another part of the state.
Yeah, 290 is a great example, and thank you, Connor, because I don't have my Hamilton County hat on right now. But 1402 is where the General Assembly is trying to go as it relates to lit. So what they would like to see is that the county has a lit rate, and then, and there's going to be a cap, cumulative cap, and the cities will have the ability to pass their own lit rates as well, and that money will stay in those cities. And there, there's a question of, okay, well, if the county provides countywide service, that's something they're going to have to think about. How, how is that formula put together so that the county is still getting some of this rate from the cities because they do provide countywide services? So 1402 would be really, I would love your feedback on it too, because that will be put into Senate Bill 1. And so what my plan is, is to, or what the plan is, is Senate Bill 1 is going to be amended next week, House Bill 1402 will go into it. I'm being told Senate Bill 1 is stripped, but the politics of it is, is that the Senate really, really cares about that maximum levy growth quotient cap, or phase out, or whatever, or phase in in this case. So Chairman Thompson acknowledges that we need to keep the MLGQ language the way it is, or change it to a flat 3%, whatever it is. That's still up in the air, those discussions are, you know, being made. They're going to play a little bit of political baseball.
Why not make it an inflationary tactic? You know, to say it's a flat 3, maybe inflation's probably 1% that year.
And that's, I think, I think a lot's on the table, but they're worried about when it's really high and then.
When it's really high, you never saw a stop rate, right?
Right, and I, I hear you, I hear you. And I, so again, this is all, you know, this is, this is all influx right now.
Yeah, I'm sure it will be, but it's good we're having this conversation, you can hear some of the concerns, I'm sure. You've already heard them, I'm sure, but I'm not, and this is all just hearing this for the first time off the top of my head, I'm not opposed to cities being able to have their own lit if they want to do that.
No, right.
But what comes into play a little bit is this, let's say cities, hey, we can take care of ourselves with the lit, you know, we can get what we need. And then when it comes to us being a Coette County, the city is a big percentage of the vote, for they need change in our lit structure. You know, my city marriage is probably 38% of our vote or something like that. So why give them as much say? If they can do their own lit, maybe somehow it needs to be changed so they don't get as much say in what happens with the countywide lit.
Well, I think that's the intention, it's an E, you kill, I'd have to see the language, but.
Okay, so the Coette part would go away maybe, is what we're saying.
But I don't, I, potentially, I think there's a lot on the table for what our lit structure is going to look like.
Because you understand, as a Coette County, you have a tax council.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you have to have 51% of the representation to pass a change in the lit structure.
Right.
And the cities are a big part of that.
Absolutely. Justin, what I'm going to do is I'm going to send you, there's, I mean, the email had the link in it, but I, I don't think you were on my email chain, Counselor, but read 1402, give me some feedback. But, but what's going to have to happen is when Senate Bill 1 is amended, that's going to be redrafted, and I'm just going to send it to you again. So you can either wait till it's all reprinted, or you can read 1402 now to at least kind of get an understanding of where the House's head is at. And then if you have feedback, you know, I'm happy, we can arrange testimony if you want. What I do for my individual counties is I meet with your individual legislators and say, okay, this is how it's impacting Grant County, this is how it's impacting XYZ, you know, take a look at the fact that, and what I would like from you, and I don't know who I should ask to do this, and you have the formula, but if your schools, I would like to know how much your schools collect of your overall property tax levy. I want to know how, what percentage that is.
You can get that pretty easily.
And so, and if I can have that, and then you can compare it to how much you are losing as a county versus your schools, because it's probably disproportionate. Most of my, most of my counties are right now. They're losing more than their schools are, except their schools are getting most of the property tax. I just, it's helpful data for me, just to be able to kind of spew off.
And you can get that easy on the DLGF's website.
Yes.
With the, the budget orders that come out, it shows the levies that have been approved, you can total those things up, boom, there you can see.
Yeah, so that would be really helpful. So I can, we can put, I can put that in a simple document for everybody and then talk to your legislators about that. So this is something that we are going to be dealing with until the 11th hour. This is going to be changing, this bill is going to get dissented on, it's going to go to conference committee, it's going to change there. It's going to be a negotiation point for, you know, Senate, the Senate's going to use Senate Bill 1 as leverage for the road funding bill, if they don't get what they want in the road funding bill, because it's a House bill, so politics is, ever the.
Let me ask you this. What, is there a specific cause, a specific instance? The reason I ask the question is back when we did 2008 legislative changes on the property tax structure and all those, the, some of the properties in Marion County really triggered all this tax cap situation and all that. Is there something now that's triggered all this discussion to drastically change what our local income tax and our property tax situation is?
Well, depends on who you ask. If you ask the governor, he says he's been running this property tax narrative since 2022.
And running it for what reason? I mean.
Because he felt that property taxes skyrocketed and that.
He personally, or he's looked at numbers, he's had feedback from citizens, I mean.
Well, he, he asked my Commissioner Association if they have had received calls on property taxes, and we shook our head no. He goes, well, I have. Citizens, I mean, so, and he was obviously in Congress before this too. So he's saying that this was a big deal for him in Congress.
But he's not in Congress, so he can deal with it.
Correct. But, you know, he says, yeah, I travel, say, you know, I'm getting these phone calls. And so, but if you ask Jeff Thompson, he's a local government guy, and he's always thought the lit, especially what happens with cities like Carmel and Fishers who kind of take advantage of debt services and, and growth formulas and excess levy appeals, that, that it needs to be restructured. So it just depends on who you talk to and who's in leadership and who, you know, runs those committees.
I just want it to be fact-based, not political. And it's not going to be that way.
I need to. You're preaching to the choir. Yes. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty building, but sometimes you want to beat your head against the marble wall, because I had a conversation on the way here where someone had asked me, oh, it was about an energy issue, and he's like, why isn't it like this city? I was like, well, I get told all the time why I consider, why I assume logic is the first.
You know, all you can say is my, of course, my income tax percentage is the same in '25 as it was in '24, but my tax bill, my property tax bill, I lived in the same house for the last 32 years, is actually less than '25 than it was in '24.
Wow, I would love to have that problem.
So.
Because I do not.
Not everybody's one of them.
No, you, and I hear you, and, and I would argue that, I'm not sure citizens actually are throwing as much of a fit about this, but all that to say, Senate Bill 1, biggest bill that's going to impact local agency government this year. But there's more. That was, you know, that's the tip of the iceberg. And so I'll talk about road funding next, because it's the next biggest one. So this, this.
Sydney, I just want to be, I'm sorry, mindful of the time. You have a hard cutoff at noon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I can go pretty quick.
I'm sorry, I've talked too many minutes.
No, you're fine. I can go quick.
I just want to make sure you cover what you need to cover.
No, I can go quick. So 1461 is the road funding bill. All you need to know about this right now, it's becoming less of a road funding bill and restructuring of some of our road funding programs. So right now, community crossings, there's a stipulation in that bill that you can apply for those, you can apply for like a quarter of the funds, but you can essentially not apply for the funds unless you have a wheel tax in place. I think 40 counties don't have a wheel, wheel tax, so a lot do. But our argument from a larger local government standpoint is that that should not be the only factor for CCMG. A lot of counties have been innovative and some, you know, I know Hamilton County uses MVH in, in some of their TIF funds for, for road projects, and, you know, Knox County has inkeeper, some have inkeepers, some use gaming revenue. And so we're asking for that, those options to be, or for those requirements for application to be expanded so that more types.
Explain a bigger picture, we do this instead.
Right, instead of that, right? Because, you know, and so, you know, we're, we're, I talked to the Chair of the Senate Roads and Transportation Committee this week, and he is not married to that part of the legislation at all. He wants all of our opinions. So I think we have a leg up in there.
I think we've always had the feeling that the tenor coming from Indianapolis was that if you had a wheel tax, you're going to get less funding.
Right.
There's always been that threat over our heads, so to speak.
Right, right, exactly. And so I think, I'm actually pretty optimistic about us being able to expand those requirements or just get rid of that provision in general. Another portion is if it has to do with your Paser ratings, and we're kind of working through this right now. So in the original piece of the legislation, if you had a Paser rating of seven or better, you could use more of your restricted MVH funds. So right now, it's 50-50, it would go to 60-40 if you had a seven or better. We got that number down to six.
What is that number?
Paser rating, pavement, asphalt, come, C and then roads. It's, it's for the conditions of your roads and your rating. But some would argue, a lot would argue, that it's a subjective number, and you can kind of finagle it. And so we got that number down to six, we would like it to see, oh, see five, because most counties have at least a five Paser rating. And then you, then your restricted funds open up more, so you go to a 60-40 MVH. And so those are the two biggest parts of that bill. Something we need to keep a lookout for, I mean, tolling's still a part of the conversation, delivery fees are still a part of the conversation, but those two provisions are for counties specifically that we want to keep an eye on. And if you have information on your Paser rating over the last three to five years, again, any data is helpful for me.
I've never heard that rating, I've never heard that.
And it's pavement?
Pavement, asphalt, and it's slipping me right now what the other two come.
I mean, I've just never heard that.
Yeah, it's basically, and so they want to tie that to a, I mean.
And right now, it's a 50-50 split, dollars coming in.
Correct. And so that, that MVH is a conversation every year. So I'm going to move to energy real quick, and then I'm going to go first, talk about the budget, and then I'll talk about these three issues that I'm working on individually, but that I think will help, that really do help all counties. So when I say energy, all right, so we had, and this is similar, we're all made some information from you. Quickly, House Bill 1628 was a bill that died in the first half, but it preempted all local control as it related to energy development projects that spanned multiple counties. So that's your, that's your renewable, that's your gas, that's your carbon sequestration, that's you, I mean, it's, you name it, it was.
Exceed across this county line.
And, and water, and anything that produces energy at all. It preempted local government. It was a really tough battle. We were able to kill the bill. The author of that bill is less than thrilled right now with us. And quite frankly, the Speaker's not happy either. He wants to see some compromise on this home rule, low renewable energy issue. So we have Senate Bill 425 right now, and this bill's, this bill allows SMRs, or small modular reactors, and natural gas projects that produce 80 megawatts or more to be built on land only if it was used for, only if it had been at one point used for energy generation or is a reclaimed mine, or mine. So that bill is, probably, may not affect you right now. I know I have one parcel in Hamilton County that it affects that we're kind of diving into right now, because Duke has that as a substation. But if there's any piece of land here that, that is used for energy generation, like a substation, or was at one point and was decommissioned, just let me know. I'm, we're just trying to collect data.
How about these little, there are some parcels that had like oil, I want to say, oil drilling on it. Is that something?
It's, that's not generation, though. So I, I'm not sure.
It might be used.
80 megawatts or more as well as a factor.
So it's not doing that, okay.
Right. So no, I don't think so.
I don't think we have any generation.
Yeah, probably not.
Most don't. But I was surprised to hear that Hamilton County did, so I need, I need to at least bring that up, so I can get some data on it.
You know, the small solar farms around.
And again, it would have to be 80 megawatts or more, which is not that much, I've learned. But just maybe, just keep, just keep that in mind. I just want data to use for my lobbying efforts if you guys did have that. So another bill that's actually not on here, because I actually just got a call about it yesterday, so it's 427. Right now, it's a carbon sequestration bill. We have been told again and again and again that this bill is not expanding the ability to produce or build carbon sequestration projects. That doesn't seem to be the case anymore. And the person carrying this bill is the person that is mad at us for killing House Bill 1628. And he came up to us this week and told us that, well, he just basically asked if we were ready. Very elusive, but he, there's some, there's some game going on, we don't know yet, but I think what's going to happen is he's going to expand, he's going to try to expand the capabilities of doing these projects without local government input. I don't have that in writing yet. I just know that the, and he's trying to hide it in the budget, so he kind of plays his cards a little bit, because he can't help himself. Just, but, but a home rule issue we need to work on. I know that, you know, it has been a big deal. I remember when 1381 and 2021 came about, a lot of counties passed moratoriums because of that bill, because it preempted local control. So I just want to kind of put that at the, at the top of your mind. You'll get that amendment from me, you'll get that rewritten bill from me once we see it. And then, well, I guess Connor's your county attorney, so he'll be reviewing it to kind of see what the, what the actual impact is here. But I want to put that on your radar. So I'll go over the budget very quickly. So just as a general local government, from a local government standpoint, we're keeping track of public health funding, behavioral health funding, and then we're, are, we're monitoring the per diem funding for Level 6 offenders. You probably heard in the news that DOC has ran out of money. So if they, if you were owed money, I also need to know that.
I haven't been paid since October.
I saw that in the paper a while back.
I do not, but I can work with the sheriff to get that number.
Can you get me that number? So I think we found a compromise, I think we found a compromise for DOC to at least reimburse what is currently owed. I forget what the number is in the budget right now, but we're actually pretty optimistic that Michler is going to raise that money, or raise that dollar amount. I think it was like 43 million and then 45 million, I don't know what it'd be raised to. But we're pretty optimistic that we came to a good landing place on that. But just, again, that's something, just to let you guys know, that's something I'm watching.
I didn't realize that was an issue. I was reading the paper a while back that had an article about some counties.
We didn't, we had no idea it was an issue either until that day.
Didn't we know we hadn't? I mean, I assume we knew that we hadn't been or.
It was brought to our attention.
I read an article.
Because you probably don't think about it.
I probably sent it around.
It doesn't necessarily.
Well, we had met our miscellaneous revenue for '24, so.
Yeah, it didn't really hit the radar.
Right. Okay, so those are some big issues. Now, some other issues that I would like you to be aware of that I'm working on, one being, it's a county cleanup bill. And I'm wondering if, I don't know if we'll have time to talk about this, but you, Commissioner Pauling, you brought up the judges issue, this might be a home for it. I don't, I cannot confirm that yet, but I just need to think. Judges get real finicky, real finicky at the State House. And so part of me thinks we need to wait and hide the language somewhere instead of have a public hearing over it, but just, or we need to have a public hearing regardless, but I need to figure out where we want to do that at. But the county cleanup bill right now has, is an anonymous local government bill. Two parts that I think will benefit you guys is we are expanding open law provisions to what can be discussed in executive sessions, and we're adding language that helps attorneys speak with their commissioners and, well, the governing bodies that they serve under attorney-client privilege. So that language is in there. Another provision we got added in there was before an inmate is able to bring a lawsuit against the county, we have language in there that basically mirrors federal code that requires them to exhaust all administrative options before bringing that lawsuit to you. So that should save you money and put the burden on them to exhaust those resources.
I'm sorry, this Trust Indiana Fund language?
Yes, that's what I was going to next. So 1523, this bill has become a dual issue. So counties right now cannot invest public dollars outside of county boundaries, cities and towns can. So our position is that we would like to be able to ban betting outside of county territories. Now, there's another factor of this bill that, and by the way, bankers hate that, they vehemently oppose that. But there's another part of this bill that has to do with Trust Indiana Fund. This is the treasurer's fund, and the bankers, and this is, I'm learning about this issue. I've met with the treasurer's office two or three times now to try to understand. But it's the treasurer's fund that he can invest himself, and that is also derailing this bill, because the bankers, they want to protect their institutions, right? And so I don't know what specific question you had, Justin, but I'll try to answer it if it's about Trust Indiana.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the impact.
So like right now, the county has four accounts within the Indiana Trust Fund, and we shuffle money to those funds to make more interest. Obviously, the interest rate's way better than the bank, what the banks are paying.
Correct.
I don't know why they'd be mad, but why not go ahead and get, I think it's like four and a quarter, four, three, five or something.
You're saying there's language to stop that from happening?
No, no, this is just putting more parameters around Trust Indiana. More to do, so I think what, how it's going to end is that Trust Indiana is going to have a board, an appointed board. Bankers are going to be on it.
So when we shuffle our funds, Indiana Trust Funds, then they're reinvesting them somehow.
Yeah, and that's the question that the bankers have, is like.
Yeah, are they investing them local?
Right, and the question is, where are they going? And yeah, so I don't think we need to be worried about that too much, your capabilities of that, it's not going to be, going to be taken away. But these are all leverages, right, that the bankers are using, like, what's more important? Do you want to focus on derailing your Trust Indiana, or do you want to focus on not letting counties do its best for taxpayers and bank outside county lines? So we're advocating for that. There is a county executive bill right now that establishes a process for moving county executives from office. Counselors have a process right now, but commissioners actually don't. And so this is coming on the heels of, oh, Jessup in Hancock County, who's spending some quality time in Nevada jail right now, and still wanted to be on the ballot after he was arrested. And so that's, the author of that bill is from him, or from Hancock County. And so we are, we get it, as a Commissioner Association, we get the desire to be able to remove somebody. We think there needs to be more parameters, because we think, because commissioners are such a small body, it could get a little political, and we're just trying to mitigate that. So we're putting, we think there's another leg to that stool, if you will. I feel like I didn't breathe for like 40 minutes. So that's high level, what I have. I know that there's some issues we talked about, counties being opted into the state health plan. Again, I think that's, we start these conversations now, that's a long-term plan. If I can get, Connor, I probably am talking to you, but if I can get some language regarding what you think that judge, is it their assistants?
Just to be, just can we have legislation that says that, you know, the county commissioners can decide which policy handbooks county employees use?
And we might not even need to, we might not even need to say judge.
See, that's what they say, they don't have to follow ours, the judges got one.
Yeah, but they're, and they are county employees. So what I think might be, and this is me spitballing this right now, the minute you say judge in anything, judges are going to cut out of the word. But if you say county employee and make it broad, Connor, can you find, yeah, that statute, and tell me what you think it should look like? Try not to use the word judge. I might be able to find a home for that in the county cleanup bill. But I would need it soon. I don't know when that county cleanup bill is going to be heard, but it's in the next two weeks. And there's deadlines when I can get amendments in. I will try for that. Let me do some, let me check, check some people's temperature on if I'm going to blow something up. But if we can make that not say judges and just say county employees, I have no idea why that would be a problem.
Or more specifically, court staff?
Yeah, let me.
Well, that still might trigger some things.
I wanted to make this comment on that, I guess. Obviously, there is a process to go about getting something done, I know, but what I hear is trying to be a little covert about it, it bothers me. I want to be upfront, hey, here.
Oh, well, we have to talk about it, and amendments talked about publicly. We can't not talk about it in it. But I think from a standpoint of the narrative being, we want consistency for all our county employees, that's, that's a very true statement.
That is true.
You know, and so that's just the approach we want to take. I would never want to do, it's just about the narrative and how it looks, right?
I understand, the narrative is important, you know, the terms that are used, but I don't want the judges to not know about it necessarily, either.
I hear you, I hear you, and.
I don't want them to be able to come back and say, oh, you snuck that one in on us.
Well, and.
Maybe it could be other departments as well.
And to be, to be fair, they have, they have a lobbyist that could interpret that language and say, does this apply to us, right? And so that's my job as a lobbyist, to catch when things apply to me. And so I would never advocate for doing something under somebody's nose. It's not how I operate as a lobbyist, that's not how I want my clients to operate. I think words matter, though.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And making it more uniform is important, I think, just from an operational standpoint. So if it's not just the court staff, does that mean another county employee doesn't have to? So county employee sounds like the best terminology to use. So yeah, Connor, if you can get me something on that, that would be helpful as soon as possible.
Sydney, I'll give you a call.
Okay, cool. And then I wanted to talk to you, I mean, and it doesn't have to be, I have two minutes, and I can be a little late for my call, about any other issues that, you know, you've thought about. I know about those two, obviously. The first one being, I need to talk to some state agencies in the governor's office first. But just some, just, again, we don't have to do it right now, but if there are some things you think about and say, oh, you know.
Let's compile a list and.
Yeah, and then we'll determine, okay, hey, this is a, this is a heavy lift, we need to talk about this all summer, or this is something that I think we can easily get through, but I don't have a Jermaine bill this year anymore for it, so do we have to do it next year? So, but it's never too early to talk about that. And, and as I, now that I represent you officially, my job is to make sure that your legislators know that they can come to me in the hallway. And that's what I think one of the benefits of having somebody down at the State House is, you know, you guys could text all day, but all of you are busy. If they, if they could just see me in the hallway and say, okay, Sydney, or I can see them and walk with them while they're going to their next meeting to chat with them, that's just, it's a very quick and hands-on experience. And they, I know that they appreciate that, that there's somebody in there that they can just say, hey, come to my office right now, I want to talk to you about this, and I want to talk about.
Do hours know about you at this point, is that?
I have sent texts, and we have not had our, had our meetings yet, yeah, but, but they know who, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of just a local government advocate, so they, they all know I am one, but when I get some, when I get somebody signed on individually, it's more of a, hey, you can call me about this now. This won't be just about all commissioners, this is going to be about Grant County specifically.
I just had a question, you guys might have already talked about it, but what, I mean, Shannon told me how slow the state of Indiana has paid us. I mean, is it worth making a law that the state of Indiana, for housing inmates, pays